Andy said he might not be here timely.
Yep. Where Chief Scous?
There he is.
Getting to wonder. Would you like your own personal microphone?
Wonder and he wanders right in. Hi Chief, how you doing?
Wherever you'd like to sit. I can even get your nameplate if you like. Last time you had one, you wouldn't sit there.
Shall we begin?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the August 18th meeting of the East Hempfield Township Traffic Commission. Please join me for a moment of silence. Followed by I pledge to the flag. And now I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We do have action items too for the evening. First is to look at the minutes of our July 21st, 2021 meeting. Do we have any comments regarding those minutes as prepared?
I didn't see any issues with it with the minutes.
Is that a motion?
It is.
Second by the chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have dispense with the minutes. Next item is Windermere Street sign plans. Do we have visuals?
I believe that was a holdover from last month.
Thought they took action on it.
Yes, we took action on that. I thought I had deleted it.
Okay, yes, I recall that we had looked at that and so we have dispense with that. And have we, are the signs completed, Mr. Madonna?
I have not checked as of yet because they are not done paving the street yet. Therefore, they will not have the raised pedestrian crossing signs up yet, I believe. So still waiting for them to pave it. And when they do, I will inspect it all at that time.
Mr. LaFever, Nate and I were out there last week and they didn't have the raised pedestrian, they didn't have the, all the sign, all the signs installed yet. So they'll probably do that, like Perry said, once they get the wearing course in.
Okay. Very well. I think we can defer to staff to see that item to completion. Third item that we have for the evening is the monthly activity report provided by the police department. And we're fortunate to have Chief Scous with us this evening. I had only one comment from my review of that. And it was, as I recall, it gave a location. I still can't bring this, this up here tonight, so I'm going by memory. They gave a location on Greystone Road and I thought it was 1800. But it mentioned a water pump house. The only water pump house structure that I know of, I think is in East Petersburg Borough.
I don't, I don't know what, what that means. Sergeant Lombardo prepared that. I know on Church Street we planned to, to put the speed equipment by the pump house.
On Church Street.
So maybe he, maybe he cut and pasted something and it didn't go in the right spot. I'll check with it.
Is, is, oh, the pump house is down in the meadow, so to speak, the low area.
That's where we would set up the equipment. So I don't know if, if when he was adding things that might have moved it. I'll double check for the next thing.
Yeah, please, I, because, and now the Greystone Road location is probably up by the Roots area. I'm not familiar with the numbering.
Typically where we get complaints would be east of the intersection of Landisfor.
Oh, okay.
Going into towards east.
Well, it is kind of straight there. You have to dodge manholes though. Anyway. Ma'am? Oh, yes, we have that, particularly on Sunday mornings. Yes. I appreciate that report. I think it's very comprehensive for us. And I see we're making progress on placing those traffic monitors and we're getting good information from them. Mr. Bennett, do you have any comments from that or?
The only additional comment to that is I thought, and it's a good report and I certainly appreciate it. My only comment was that I thought when we talked about, spoke about this, we were going to try to also identify which, which projects were township initiated and which town, projects were resident initiated.
That's the last column of that, of that chart on the last page, complaint, yes or no.
Okay.
If there's a yes, then it's because we did it because we got resident complaints. If it's a no, it's because we think, we think it needs to be done.
All right, sounds good. Okay, now that I have the key.
I would, I would venture to say as a generalization that our efforts seem to be having some attention. I'm not sure they're bearing a whole lot of fruit yet. But I'm optimistic that we are getting a message across and hopefully we'll get some safer driving.
I think that by the end of this meeting, we'll resolve a number of issues that are on this report that we can move off of it or in a different direction as we deal with the other agenda items.
Okay, in that case, let's move forward to our speed study reports. Indian Springs and Pine Tree Way. As I recall reading that, it doesn't seem, it seems that there's a very few high speeders and there's a bulk of people that are safely within the percentile. Is that a fair statement?
I would say that that the average speed and the 85th percentile speed are higher than the, the speed limit. So, but it's minimal. So I think the traffic commission would need to make a recommendation as to whether or not you move forward with any kind of traffic calming devices. I think our recommendation as staff, when we talked before, is if you do anything on either street, you should do it on both. Because if you, if you were to make traffic calming on Indian Springs, the traffic's going to try to avoid it by going on Pine Tree and vice versa.
Of course.
But.
Well, I guess we've come to a realization that if we don't do anything, it will continue with some very significant speeders and yes, those that are above what they should be. I believe that is. Let me say, I think that we have gained some ground on Spring Valley. And therefore, these two streets have become probably our most significant matter before us. Is that your assessment possibly? And with that, I'm leading towards saying that I think we should, even if they're the temporary units to see what results it brings. It may, it may be a good move.
We're talking Indian Springs and Pine Tree, right? This is, this is the second speed study or the, this is the result of the most recent speed study. So I, it doesn't clearly indicate that we've got a major issue. I mean, there is some speeding that goes on there. I mean, I was down there the other day with Mr. Beck and Nate looking at another situation and, and I thought the traffic was moving pretty, pretty good on that road. I guess for me, sort of maybe as an initial measure for the, the streets. I think maybe we should maybe look at painting 25 miles per hour again on the, on this, on the streets and possibly where, where Public Works might feel appropriate, we, we put up children at play signs because there is a lot of children in the neighborhood. As a, as an initial situation.
Originally, when we started talking about parameters for doing something in addition to, if there was a problem, we, we thought that they should be at least 10 miles per hour over the speed limit. These, these studies are not showing that. I mean, we have outliers, yes. Yes, it's residential. Children at play signs certainly makes sense. But there's really not a speeding problem according to the study on either street.
That was somewhat where I was coming from. And I suspect as I've begun to observe where I live, there are two cars at a certain time of the day, and I'm trying to pinpoint that, that I could request some attention to it, but they make the curve at my house and they flog it. And these are very loud sports cars and they're, one is chasing the other. And it's of course not a safe situation, but I suspect on Pine Tree, we have a situation where at a certain time of the day, someone is speeding. This was like we had in Wheatland Hills also. And the rest of the day is probably kind of okay. So yes, Mr. Bennett, I, I paused to, to consider that nobody likes the speed bumps and your approach would be one that might bear results without doing to the bumps and, and has, and I believe it has merit.
What results are you trying to achieve?
What?
What results are you trying to achieve?
What am I trying to achieve? I'm trying to get rid of the speeders, the real speeders, the ones that are out.
Not going to pay attention to signs or?
Well.
They're going to pay attention to bumps, yes. Now, when we did the studies, they, the, the equipment we're using now can fine tune the problem times of day. So Chief Scous could put out patrols during the difficult times, the more of the prevalent times for speeding where the outliers are, if there's a trend. I don't, I don't know if there is, but if we use this criteria, we're going to have this all over the township. Because it's not, it's, it's typical. It's, it's what people do because they're open roads.
Yeah, and I would say that, you know, I said it's a little bit higher, but it's, this is certainly, this data is not showing that this is a major problem. It's within five or 10 mile an hour. It's not enforceable until it's 10 mile an hour over. So we really wouldn't be able to enforce the average speed is not a violation that the police can address in a 25 zone. And you know, 33, it's a little, it's a little high. But I would agree with Cindy that if you can go in my neighborhood, any other neighborhood, you're going to have comparable results. We're going to have speed bumps and lines painted all over the township.
Well, I'm not necessarily talking about speed bumps here, obviously, or any kind of modification to the road, really. I just, I just think that children at play signage.
This one is a resident.
Might slow, might, might slow someone down. Maybe, maybe it doesn't. I, I don't know. But I mean, at, at the end of the day, I don't, I don't think there's a great cost to that. And I think it sends, it sends a message to the, to the residents that we're trying to do something. That's, that's my point.
This is a resident complaint driven one, is it not?
It is.
Yes.
Well, we did not try here, but we were unsuccessful in Wheatland Hills, asking them to look for and report to us speeding vehicles. That is a response that at least says we're, we're trying to do something, though it suggests we're passing off the responsibility. I know we could be getting feedback that way. I, I agree with Mr. Bennett that we should exhibit that we are doing something. They're not here in the meeting knowing that we're discussing it. I don't know if anyone is on Zoom that I'm not aware of, but.
If I may just interject just a little bit, I, I really have to agree with Cindy. The, the parameters that you're seeing there, you're going to find that on every single street in the township. So again, respectfully, Mr. Bennett, you're going to be putting up hundreds of signs, painting hundreds of 25 mile an hour speed limit signs everywhere. If you go by those parameters, what you're seeing right there. It, we, I mean, we have an $85,000 line painting budget as it is. Again, I hate to disagree, but again, you are going to find this on every single street in the township, not, you know, not just little residential areas like this, but everywhere.
This is one that's been recurring and coming before.
I, I guess I would, I guess the point, and Perry, I, you know, I hear what you're saying. And we obviously aren't going to put signs up in every neighborhood where, where we have this. But we do have this type of speeding, this type of activity going on throughout the township. Okay. And I, I just think that when it, it's brought to our attention, I'm not saying do this in every situation, when it's brought to our attention, I, I just think it's a, it's a, a good response from a township standpoint.
Well, I'm agreeing with both sides of this discussion, of course, as we have to. A thought I'm having is if we do it where we get resident complaint or concern, that probably won't result in all of our neighborhoods in the township, though it will definitely set us an example and a precedent that will attract attention. I guess I was thinking if, if this would get the speed down, I, I'd still be in favor of it, but I'm not sure it's a cure all.
I mean, I'm okay moving on, you know, if, if.
In other words.
If Cindy, the chief and Perry don't feel that it, it has merit, I'm willing to take, you know, take that into consideration and, and you know, we can just move on.
Or in other words, I would suggest that says we're ignoring it and waiting for the residents to come back again.
But there, but there's not a problem.
Pardon?
But there's not a problem.
Can I, can I, if this might make it a little easier. We did a study in 2018. And the average speed was 31, 32, depending on the direction. And the 85th percentile was 36, 39. And we did the study again in 2019 because there was construction going on and the average speed was 30 and 31. And the average speed was 34 and 35. And then we told them we'd do another study to follow up on that study. So we've done three studies. And in three studies over the course of three and a half years, the average speed has actually dropped and the 85th percentile speed has dropped. So the concern originally came up when Centralville Road was closed off and traffic was cutting through and, and the traffic commission at the time said, well, let's see what happens when Centralville Road opens back up. And as we thought, there is now less, less traffic. And looking at the numbers there, it's actually showing that the, there's more cars there now, but the speed is slower. I don't know what that means, but that's what we can show from three studies over three years.
And I'm comfortable with that variance to the 25. It is, it is the exceptional speeders that I would like to have a way to address. Mr. Bennett, I will take your last comment as a motion and I will second it that we table this in effect for now. You may come and address us. Yes, ma'am.
Um. I'm, I'm an ex-senior insurance investigator and litigation examiner, and I've handled account, municipality accounts in like five different states over my 20-year career. And when I defended municipalities, I always looked at the notice issue of any type of, any type of accident, any type of claim that's being brought against the township for a car accident or whatever. And the first thing that I would check out is the notice issue. Is there a problem for us? Is there a problem with the roadway? Has there been speeding issues before? And how long has the township known about the condition? And what did you do about it in, at all, if anything? And I, I feel that, you know, if the residents came and complained and, you know, about the speeding now, you know, when you're actually standing outside and you see a car going by, it can go 20 miles an hour and someone can say they're speeding because it might feel like it's, it's going faster. But I think that you've had, you have a history of doing your research on that road that substantiates that you've done everything you can. They would put you on notice of a possible issue. You, you totally debunked it by doing those reports over the last three years. I would say, you know, you did, you did your work. Like I, there would never be, like the plaintiff could not bring a case because you, you know, totally avoided your notice issue. But, um, but as far as residents coming to you saying there's an issue, I, I think the, the least that could be done to show the township is working with them is the 25 mile an hour or the, the speed limit painted on the road. I don't know how much it costs. How much does that cost? And you don't have to do it to every road. All right. But maybe just the ones that people complain about. But because when you're going to go out and do your own, being proactive on the roadway, like, you know, you might say, we might have an issue on this road. No one's complained about it. We'll do a speed study. If you do that and you come up with an issue, all right, then I would say paint the 25, paint the speed limit on the roadway initially, right away. Because you know, you, when you do your own proactive, you're actually putting yourself on notice of a possible issue. You follow me? So the, the first thing I would do is, is first of all, limit how many you do in a given period of time that have an issue. Like if you do two with no issues, you can, you know, do, that's fine. Do, do the other ones right away. But I wouldn't do like five at a time because you're going to have five with five issues. And then you're placed on, you're placing yourself on notice of five major issues, speeding issues at the same time. So I would, I would definitely handle this way, like do the 25. I mean, I don't know how much it costs. Do the speed limit on the roadway. At least they can say, hey, they heard us. They did the study. And we're just, they're, they're doing that as a precaution, you know, being proactive on, on, on it. So.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Madonna, can you give us a, a cost?
I, this particular one, we purchased the stencil. So the, the spray painting of the road is probably $50, you know, in that neighborhood. You know, for one, one painting.
Which in this case would require four, if I'm not mistaken, one each way and one on each road. Mrs. Whitechirr and others, I completely agree. We don't want to be painting all the roads in East Hempfield.
I liken it back to the, the speed bumps and how many we now have. And they're growing.
Yes, and all this started on Farmingdale when they did the work on the Dornerville Bridge.
Yep.
And we've dealt with that for 14 years now and really haven't done a successful thing in at least my estimation, but we've been responsive.
You know, I don't think we have a consensus here in terms of moving forward. I, I like to suggest we just, you know, table this for now, sit on it, see if we get any more resident.
So we have that motion. I have seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's try to move on to Embassy Drive.
Do you want this left on this report?
No, if we're tabling it, it's, it's not necessary in my.
Are you tabling action or just putting it in the back burner or waiting for somebody else to come in?
I think what we have determined is that unless we have some other evidence, we don't have a problem that is requiring more action.
I think it can, I think it can come off.
Is that? So it can come off. And I'm having a thought here. Again, I, I, I'm reminded from my reviewing the documents before the meeting. There was a matter of placing speed bumps on Sylvan or Spring Valley, Spring Valley.
Correct.
Three of them. And that is a decision or that is something we are weighing? Because I don't see it in the agenda here.
Well, it's, actually is on the agenda. It's on the traffic commission report. Where, where Chris has provided a memo.
Okay.
Recommending three speed bumps.
That's right. That's right. It was McMahon's recommendation.
Right.
Okay.
And I thoroughly messed up the agenda because it should have been on the agenda. I thought it was.
Okay, well, we've caught it and that's well. So we have the same question here now. Is, is the application of speed bumps appropriate? Do we have a problem? I'm not quite as familiar with. I'm not quite as familiar with. Well, Indian Springs and Pine Tree as I am with Spring Valley, but Spring Valley definitely has straightaways. With whatever natural calming of tree canopies and narrow cartways is not seeming to to help. But I think we should address and discuss what we feel should be done with McMahon's recommendation. I'm not for expending cost just to for the sake of expending cost, but I'm would be quite in favor of expending cost. Of any measure that I think will really address a problem. And and give potential results.
So we did do the study. We found a problem. You authorize us to go to the traffic engineer for a solution. I additionally told him that we need an immediate solution as quickly as possible. So he has suggested speed bumps in three locations. That may not be the final decision. But that will get something on the road to stop the problem that exists. So tonight, your decision would be to authorize staff to put those temporary speed bumps humps. In those three locations on Spring Valley Road. At least through the fall, remove them in the winter.
You're you're supportive of that?
Yes.
He's supportive of that. And Perry, Perry, you supportive of of that?
Uh, I'm go I'm going to defer to the engineer. I'm sorry.
Oh, the engineer, the engineer, if the, you know, well, then the engineer says we we should utilize speak, that's the solution.
Not the solution, the the temporary solution.
Temporary solution.
The permanent solution may be those, or there may be something else.
Okay, so.
But.
How long are we gonna, how long will this be a temporary?
At least the fall. Because you want to remove them before winter.
Then we look at it next spring again.
Now, the problem with putting these three speed bumps in and Perry is deferring is because that requires six holes. What per bump, per not not per bump?
Per panel, you're talking around thirty six holes in the.
Yes, it is a negative in that regard. There doesn't seem to be any other solution. Do you have any of the bumps on hand?
Yes.
We we have enough to do the three that you're considering because we do still have one on Orville Road.
And it may be a foolish question, but they would go across both cartways, correct?
It would go across both lanes, sure. We have to leave some room on either side for stormwater, but it it would get the travel lanes in both directions. You you are then required to put. It it's actually four signs per speed bump, you know, two warning of speed hump ahead. And two right at the speed table itself. So you're talking, you know. Four sets of signs for each. Speed table.
Yes.
That that is your other thing to contemplate when you're doing this many, because now you're going to have signs. The entire length of that portion of Spring Valley, probably.
Is there one of these three locations that we could assess to be more significant than the other two?
We didn't ask him that question.
Yeah, I think he's just taking the total length of the area and, you know, given if you only pull one, they're going to speed up to that hump. Go over it and speed right after it, so basically like Farmingdale Road on heading south, there there was three needed. To fit in that area, and that's basically I'm I'm assuming what he has suggested here.
And he and he's he's placed them on the roads, right? Okay, so we have a so we have a problem, speeding problem. He's he's made a recommendation and. I'll make a motion to to put the three temporary speed bumps in place.
Chair seconds the motion. Discussion, any more discussion? We've asked an engineer to give us a recommendation and. We can. If if we feel, or we did feel, we have felt that there's enough of an issue here with the straightaway that we need to do something, so. All those in favor, say aye.
And again, it's they're not permanent. We're gonna we're gonna come back and look at this again.
Yep.
Okay.
And and what we do need to do, and I asked staff to try to. Work this into your responsibilities is to assess if we're getting some positive results. If it's slowing the speeding.
I think the plan is to, before they're removed in the fall, that we do another study to see what impact they had, and then you can assess that study. Determine whether or not you do a permanent solution.
Okay. Just a question comes to mind, Mister Madonna, where we've used these. Orville Bar Crest, et cetera. How they hold up? Are they getting torn by people stopping on top of them suddenly or things like that or?
We've had a couple of them become loose because they are just basically an expansion bolt down into the blacktop. And when that happens, it's kind of tough. You need to put a a bigger bolt in and a bigger expansion plug. But the main one is in the winter time, we we have, we had left the one on Orville Road over the winter. And it doesn't matter how slow you try to go over them with a snowplow. You know, it just catches and then it it elongates the hole. You cannot reuse that bolt hole location, so we we did actually have to move that before we put it back in the last time. Slightly, but moved it.
Okay, well, logic says that if they're there. People will slow down if they're not there, but the winter conditions of the roadway warrant some common sense. That hopefully will cap it. Okay. Having digressed, if you will, to that, we need to go back to Embassy Drive. And here we sort of have the other side of the question. And my thoughts on this one are, to start things off, this is not a residential street. Uh, and there's a suggestion in the narrative that the speed limit may have been. During the time when there was a lot of construction traffic at these several major development locations. And therefore, I think the question is, should not the speed be raised to the speed that the road can tolerate? And that is suggested at thirty five miles per hour.
And I would like to add add one thing. If you see the last sentence in or last paragraph on that report, we went down and looked at at Embassy and Knoll. And. The east side of Embassy isn't posted at all. It's not a residential district and it's not an urban district, so technically. The speed limit's fifty five. The same thing with with Knoll between Good and Rurstown Road, that's not posted either. We don't get complaints of speeding on either road, but but according to the vehicle code, speed limit is fifty five miles an hour. In a district like that where it's not posted. So what we have going on down there is an essentially an unposted fifty five mile an hour. Um, on the east side of Rurstown Road, a twenty five mile an hour posted speed limit on the other, and then. With the exception of the area in front of the school on Knoll. It's twenty five miles or a fifty five mile an hour on the one section, so whether whether you want to look at that. Entire area, the same, I still don't know. John may have been able to dig it up, but I don't know why that was posted to twenty five. The only thing we can figure out, it's the number of driveways, but there are actually more driveways. And more curves in the road on the east side of Embassy, where you could probably substantiate a slower speed than fifty five.
Where there is no speed posted, do we have problems?
We don't have an accident history and we don't have complaints of speeding. I don't think people drive fifty five, maybe they do, but clearly they drive upwards of fifty five. On the section that we're talking about that's currently posted twenty five.
So taking all the signs away would not be a good option. Right?
That's for you to decide.
Pardon?
That's for you to decide. I don't I don't know, and I'll be transparent with this. I don't know the solution because I don't know why. It was ever developed with no speed limit on one side and a twenty five mile an hour speed limit on the other side that. I'm sure was part of the development of both sides of that of that new road.
At different times.
At different times.
Well, if if I could offer some other information for you gentlemen to consider. Embassy Drive was just converted to a collector road as well. Or. Yeah, collector, meaning that it's going to receive industrial traffic and it's going to take. Traffic from local roads to the arterial roads. And that was just done at the beginning of the year.
The, I think one of the issues with Knoll. Is it Knoll? Knoll Road? That sort of bends around a lot too, so I think you don't you don't get a lot of speed.
From Snyder.
Yeah.
Southers.
Southers, even on the other side, at at the school there, you're turning, you're turning right and you're bending bending back left, so. I think, you know, I mean, I think we should have a speed limit on there. I I I wouldn't be opposed to thirty five, but even at thirty five, we have people that are that are doing. Above forty five. It would appear.
If we take the speed limits away. Then we would be in effect allowing sixty five. I think. I think it would be an exception for somebody to drive sixty five on those roads. You almost don't have enough. Runway to get to get it up to there. Yes, you can, but you got to work at.
There are a lot of a lot of driveways on both sections of that roadway that my concern would be. A crash at fifty five or sixty five mile an hour with somebody pulling out of a blind intersection. Blind driveway would be. Significant, but as I said before, I'm not a traffic engineer. I wasn't involved with the the planning of of the of the roads themselves. I don't know the history as to why they're they're marked the way they are. I can say that we don't have a significant crash history on either of those streets. Nor do we have complaints. The actual the complaints that we have that initiated this came from the developer. Um, that's building in that area. And complained about cars exceeding the twenty five mile an hour, and clearly they do.
All right, the new section at the twenty five is the problem.
And I, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
And another thing to consider, the east side does not have any sidewalks. This section, section west of Rurstown between Rurstown and Running Pump does have a trail. On the north side of MC. Nowadays. Normal, it's standard distance off of the roadway like a sidewalk, but it does lead to more pedestrians on the in this section. Just thought you might want to know that.
Is, what's the limit on, is the Running Pump section different speed?
Twenty five, at least up to the traffic circle.
How about the other side of the traffic circle to Marietta?
I think that's higher. I think it might be thirty five.
I think it's thirty five.
Yeah.
Well, the chair would move that we would take the section that's twenty five miles per hour and raise it to thirty five. To. Alleviate a problem, reduce the. Efforts of the police department to try and keep this thing at twenty five, which is not happening. And. See how it how it bears out. That's a motion.
I'll second that motion, and again, I I would say, so it'll be thirty five the whole way.
I was not going to put any new signs where there aren't any. I was going to change the ones that are twenty five.
I'm just saying. Embassy connects with Running Pump.
You would also do Running Pump?
Yeah, I think to to be consistent.
I think it makes sense, makes the same logical sense to me to do Running Pump.
Chief, what do you think?
Because the people coming down from Columbia Avenue and Running Pump are not driving twenty five miles per hour.
The other side of the coin is. Why don't we just do it and just let's just address the situation at one embassy and change that to thirty five and let anything else the way it is.
Yeah, that's what I was suggesting, that we don't have signs, we don't add any signs, we leave well enough alone what's working. Do you have that, Mrs. White?
You're increasing the speed on Embassy, east side of Embassy from twenty five to thirty five.
And Running Pump.
The west side. No, west side. West side.
Yeah.
West side, I'm sorry.
Yes, where there are signs.
There's signs now, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it's not a, it's not residential and it's not urban, therefore it's technically fifty five. The currently unposted section of Embassy would be between Rurstown Road and Good Drive.
Not to beat a beat a dead horse or so to speak, whatever, we do have the muse and places there that come out to.
That's on Knoll.
Well, we are talking Knoll, aren't we?
No, no, Embassy.
Just Embassy.
Just Embassy.
But but was her question, and it is not the question, is Knoll is not posted either.
That's correct.
Correct.
Not.
So it's fifty five. Well, except that could be argued, that's the point I'm making.
Well, it's not, I think it depends on how an engineer might look at the.
Access.
Now, the definition of residential, because there is no frontage of residences for three, I think it's three hundred feet. There's no frontage, those are backyards.
Okay.
The muse, so I don't know without getting some legal interpretation about residential, but there are no houses at all. On Embassy.
Again, I would let it well enough alone what isn't a problem, but.
They're they're retirement.
No, yeah, I know.
That's on Knoll, not Embassy.
There are apartments, but that's. I would say about three hundred, five hundred yards away from the roundabout. Knoll Drive. Knoll Knoll Drive between Rurstown Road and and Running Pump is. Signalized or signed at twenty five miles an hour and it does have a school zone. It's the east side that they're referring to that does not have any posted signage.
Well, thank you, but I I think we have a motion on the floor and I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say aye. All right.
Judy, are you clear on that motion? She's laughing at me. So so the motion is to increase the speed limit on Embassy. West side of Embassy from twenty five to thirty five, and that goes through the roundabout on Running Pump. Or is that not included?
Well, I I'm being told that Running Pump is thirty five.
With the exception of the portion between Embassy and. Columbia.
Traffic circle can't be.
North of.
Traffic circle, thirty five mile an hour.
No. North, north of the traffic circle, it's posted at thirty five. So, south of it.
I'm seeing twenty five.
I'm seeing pictures, older pictures from twenty eighteen, it was it was posted twenty five south of where the roundabout was.
But it's the north side of it, if you got, if you're traveling south. But it's the north side of it, if you got, if you're traveling south on Running Pump from Marietta, it's thirty-five.
It's thirty-five to the roundabout.
To the roundabout. So why, what's the issue with it being thirty-five to the roundabout coming in the other direction?
South of Running, south of the roundabout.
Well, that, that would be south of the roundabout, yeah, yeah.
I thought the only thing on Running Pump at twenty-five was the section between Embassy and Columbia.
Well, and I, I think that's what we have to remember. With this new section of Embassy, Running Pump was realigned into Embassy. So now all the, the commercial traffic is going Embassy. Previously, all traffic was going Running Pump into a residential zone. And no longer have that amount of commercial traffic going through that residential, um, development.
So that can stay at twenty-five. All right. From the intersection of Embassy to Columbia Avenue will remain as it is.
Twenty-five, right, but north of Embassy, it's going to be thirty-five.
Okay, yes.
To, to the roundabout.
Okay. And just so I'm clear, it'd be, it would be all of Embassy from Roerstown up to Running Pump would be thirty-five as well.
Everything in yellow to the west on the map, which goes to the, goes to the traffic circle.
I don't know what that speed limit is right now, but it may be twenty-five there because it's entering the roundabout.
But the other side's not.
It's from the pictures I saw on Google Street View. It's hard to tell because it shifts between the time when the roundabout was there and when the roundabout was after it was there. So this area, I couldn't see, uh, I couldn't see a, any post sign on Google Street View from, from here to here.
And we, our speed study was conducted on that sign or on that display right about where it says twenty-five mile an hour in red, right where the highlighter is. So that is the section of road, the new section of road that wasn't there two years ago, whenever they put it in. That's the section that, that we're discussing.
Right.
North where it merges into, into Running Pump, I, I don't, I can't offer an educated opinion at this point.
This, this is the area where, um, Oak Tree is going to be building, three new buildings, two medical office buildings and a new industrial building.
Right.
This is where Nissan Foods is. There's a, uh, tire, Jack Williams Tire here and Royal Farms here. And then you have Aldi and a, a couple of the restaurants and other businesses.
Move your pointer down to the, the, to the left, right? Keep going, right there. Running Pump is heading north on that chart. What's the speed limit there?
It's not posted right now, um, and that's going off of Google Street View, so I don't know if that's completely accurate. But I believe it's, it's not posted or it's posted at twenty-five.
All right, so the, so the only thing, our motion tonight is only going to deal with thirty-five miles per hour up to that intersection, right to there, right to there. But I think we should look at Running Pump and have some consistency from a speed limit standpoint.
Well, that, with that being.
Except for the piece that, that runs into the residential area where it should be twenty-five.
With, with that being said, Mr. Bennett, it's posted at QBP, right out in front of QBP at twenty-five miles per hour. On the north side where they're building, um, Eaton Control, that's posted thirty-five miles an hour. And then in front of Kellogg's, it's posted thirty-five miles an hour. So the three, two of the legs.
You mean Hershey, right?
Y and S Candy, yes, yes, sir. So two of the legs that are dealing with industrial traffic are thirty-five miles an hour. And then the road that would be dealing with school traffic and residential would be twenty-five.
Are we clear?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a few minutes that we can talk about Centerville Road. And reading this one, the percentage of trucks is minimal and it suggested that they may in fact be doing local deliveries. So we still have the question of the truck routing that the township has studied a bit. And I, I believe this, this particular roadway needs to stay with that study for the time being until we can develop that whole plan for the township.
And, and let, and let me add, so that you don't get too deep into this. We're just finishing up the results for the study for the hill. South of Harrisburg Pike.
Okay.
This study is for the area around the school.
Okay.
And we're also doing the one for, for further north. So my suggestion would be not even dig into this today because I think that you should look at it holistically, um, for the entire length. And then we have some speed, speed issues, posting issues that we need to look at, at the new construction. It's forty-five, twenty-five, thirty-five, twenty-five, it's, it's all over the place right now. So, um, some of that's construction related, some of it's because it's a first course of academ on the, on the ground. And I think there's also missing signs. So I would, I would ask, um, on behalf of staff to kind of push this until we get the other study done.
Well, I definitely agree with the holistic approach from Harrisburg to at least Marietta and probably to Columbia Avenue, so that we Centerville Road is, is a road that is very significant in this township. And I think that's just something that needs to be looked at as one question, along with the whole truck route matter. So we can table this and I'll make that a motion. Are you made a motion and I'll second it? All in favor say aye.
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 You may say something. There are parts of Centerville that definitely have residences on.
We, ma'am, we, we don't have a designation between a commercial collector or a residential collector. Collector's merely defined as a road that is, uh, used to take traffic from a local to an arterial.
Yeah, I, you said it was, you sent us a sign.
I'm sorry.
That's a truck route sign that.
Detour sign.
That's been there for years.
Has it really?
But it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't apply to local deliveries, so.
Yeah, next traffic commission. Thank you.
Just so I know, just so I know that I've done.
Thank you. Any old business?
Could I, could I just, uh, one thing on, on Lidl? We've had three crashes there in nine months. It seems like a, a lot. We have a traffic study that, that we were looking for in six months after the development opened. We're now close to a, a year. So, um, we want to get on that.
We have received the study. We're waiting for our traffic engineer, which, uh, is Grove Miller, come back with their, their findings and recommendations.
Okay.
At Lidl.
Any new business? Any public comments? Any more public comments? One more.
Probably change it within the last, certainly within the last ten years.
Okay.
Yeah.
But apparently, um, this woman was complaining about that it's still dangerous and just.
It's, it is a very busy intersection and, and I'm sure one that we'll have to address here at, at some point. Because the, there is a lot of traffic on that road, Landisville Road. Yeah, but there was some action taken.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved?
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.